Good evening. I call together this work session for the Gladstone City Council and Planning Commission on Tuesday, April twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four at five thirty P M. Let's stand for, oh, um, excuse me, I'll read this other stuff first. The City of Gladstone is abiding by guidelines set forth in House Bill twenty-five sixty, which requires the governing body of the public body to, to the extent reasonably possible, to make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means and provide opportunity for members of the general public to remotely submit oral and written testimony during meetings, to the extent in-person oral and written testimony is allowed. Therefore, this meeting will be open to the public, both in person and virtually using the Zoom platform. However, since this is primarily an informational work session, we won't be taking pu- public testimony tonight. So, Tammy, will you call the role, please?
Commissioner Huckabee. Counselor Huckabee. Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Riekel. Counselor Cook. Counselor Roberts.
Here.
Counselor Garlington.
Here.
Mayor Milch.
Here.
Commissioner Volbetta, yes. Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner Langston.
Present.
Commissioner Labonte.
Present.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Mercero.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Present.
Let's stand for the flag, so that, please. Ready? Begin. All right, tonight we'll be going over the rules related to the climate-friendly and equitable communities. Requirements of parking reform in our community. We have Jackie Betts, City Administrator, Heather Austin from Three J Consulting, and Marcy Jory, our tourism business development staff person. All of those, so as a team, we'll get this good presentation and then we'll share with one another. I'll turn it over to staff for the introduction of the program.
Thank you, Mayor Milch. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. We do have a slideshow to share with you to go over the climate-friendly and equitable communities criteria, as well as the options that are before you for discussion this evening. And as Mayor Milch mentioned before, we opened the work session. Tonight's the night to discuss amongst the two bodies, and then in May, the city council will be asked to give a staff direction on which option to go forward with. So with that, we will jump right in. Here are some pictures of parking in Gladstone that Marcy Jory and I collected last week. We had a little chance to do a mini parking study, so we'll get to that. But we are here with both bodies so that we can have the conversation between the Planning Commission, who gets to implement the development code, and the city council, it sets policy for the city. So it's really important that both bodies understand what's going on and why we're headed down, whichever path you choose to head down. Climate-friendly and equitable communities is applicable to forty-eight cities in the state of Oregon that are in metro regions. They require these forty-eight cities and portions of the counties that are in metropolitan areas to make changes to their regulations for land use and development, parking requirements, transportation system planning, and regional coordination, how you work with other jurisdictions. Tonight, we're focused on the parking requirements piece of this legislation. So as far as timing goes, there are some rules from CFAC that are already in place, and the Planning Commission's pretty well aware of these because we've had several development applications where we've had to address them and not not put any parking mandates on projects that the development code would otherwise require parking of. So after December first of two thousand and twenty, December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-two, we could no longer mandate parking within one-half mile of frequent transit, and in Gladstone, that's McLaughlin Boulevard, the thirty-three Tri-Met line. There's no mandates for facilities for people with disabilities, childcare facilities, single-room occupancies, you'll hear those called SROs, affordable housing, public housing, any dwelling unit that's under seven hundred and fifty square feet in size, and shelters. And then in addition, you can no longer require more than one parking space per unit for multifamily. Our current development code has one point five. So that will be at a minimum, something we'll need to change when we go through and do code updates. By March of this year, new multifamily developments are required to put conduit for EV charging in forty percent of the parking spaces. This is implemented through the building department, so it's not necessarily something cities are required to update their development code for. But it is a best practice so that as people are developing their site plans, we know that what they're proposing can be brought forward to a building permit stage. So we are recommending that we make this a development code change as well. And then by June of this, of last year, these other rules that we're going to be discussing tonight were required to be done unless you got an exception. And so before June of two thousand and twenty-three, we did request and receive an extension for the City of Gladstone to December thirty-first of this year. So the work we're doing tonight, which will then go to city council for direction, May fourteenth, will then result into public hearings, one with the Planning Commission, one with the city council, to update the development code before December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. And let me know if there's any questions as I go along. Let me just turn this off and turn it back on. I've learned a few tricks, maybe. I'll do it. Okay, thanks, Tammy. Maybe, there we go. Okay. This slide is presented from DLCD, as a lot of the data that we're sharing tonight is. They provide a lot of information on how much it costs to provide a parking space. So on a typical development in Eugene in two thousand and eighteen, if it was in a parking garage, it was about forty-two thousand dollars per parking space. In Corvallis, in a surface lot in two thousand and twenty, it was about eleven thousand dollars per space, in a garage, sixty-two thousand. Surface off-street parking, so anything that's on the private property typically runs, and this is a pretty big range, but between fifteen hundred and twelve thousand dollars per parking space. Residential garage, so covered enclosed space to store your automobile, fifteen thousand to fifty thousand. So this is just demonstrating the high cost of how much it adds to housing and other development to require each additional parking space.
May I, may I ask, how do they determine that figure?
They researched the costs of the development and broke it down by how much it is, and I'm sure that you have similar Nike experience.
Yeah, no, that, that's a pretty standard cost accepted by the development community around Portland and just in general. We were always told around thirty, and this was a few years ago, around thirty K per spot is kind of what we were told.
That's in opposition to like something else that could be done with that?
Exactly. That money could be spent on another housing unit. The land could be put to another housing unit, is the comparison there. Next, please. So this is a slide from DLCD. These are cities that are not Gladstone. I believe this, the bottom is Madras, that recently did a parking study. And the point here is that most cities, there's a perception that there's a parking supply shortage, but generally, it's either just a perception or it's a parking management problem. So what these CFAC rules are aiming to do is making it clear that there is parking available, and if there truly is a shortage, then having cities do some sort of management, which Gladstone already has infrastructure in place, two-hour sign limits in some of your downtown core area, that sort of thing. Uh, next slide, please. So here's parking in Gladstone. Last week, Marcy and I were each able to get out into the city and get into the downtown core and just assess how much parking is available, how much parking is taken, and what it really looks like. And so I was here for Planning Commission last week. So I came out before that from five to five forty-five. Um, next slide, please. So from five to five forty-five last Tuesday, I went through and counted all of the on-street parking spaces that were available in the downtown core overlay area, and then Marcy did the same thing last Thursday over the lunch hour. And the reason we chose these times, we wanted to do a time when it might be evening that people are getting home from work, that maybe they're going out to eat at a restaurant. And then as well as not doing a Monday or Tuesday daytime shift, because Marcy has found in her on-the-ground work that if businesses do close a day or two during the week, it tends to be a Monday or Tuesday. So we were trying to make sure that we were getting an average look at what parking might be. And we found that there's about two hundred and fifty total spaces in the downtown core overlay area. On Tuesday night, a hundred and sixty-four of those were available, and on Thursday afternoon, a hundred and thirty-four were available. So over half of the parking was available in both of those timeframes. So really, we do still have quite a bit of parking available, and this is just in the downtown core, which is the five-block stretch from Arlington to Exeter along Portland Avenue, and then one block to either side. Next slide, please. So just to put it in perspective here, what it looks like to walk from Harvard Avenue to Portland Avenue versus what it looks like to go to an average parking space at Costco? It's the same, right? So you think, oh my gosh, there's no parking in Gladstone, but if you just even cross Chicago Avenue, which we didn't do with our parking study, there was a lot more available once you crossed Bellevue or Chicago. You ran into a lot more parking, and I mean, that's not even as far out as I think I usually park at Costco. Just as an example. And those are at the same scale, just for comparison. Uh, next slide, please. So why reform parking? Well, again, parking uses a lot of the land. It's a significant expense, and it displaces the amount of the property that you could use for housing or other commercial and employment uses that generate tax revenue. Many parking spots are available and underused right now. And there's significant room to more precisely meet demand and reduce excess costs. So allowing the developers to the market to drive some of the parking demand and supply really has been a model that's been making sense. Next slide, please. So parking is usually unbundled and is not paid for separately. So unbundling is a, is a term that DLCD or the state came up with. It's been really hard to wrap people's minds around, but really, it's saying that if you're going to build a development with a parking lot, you're going to sell or lease the parking lot separately. So no longer do you automatically have a parking space when you rent or buy a condo, you then do that separately. And this does happen in larger cities typically, but it's less common for commercial-type uses. So this is one thing that the state has really focused on in that this results in a lot of over-parking. When you require some level of parking with each building, you're really letting the people with cars have this benefit that's being subsidized with, by a people without cars. So next slide, or, yeah, so more parking that you have results in more driving. So people tend to see it as, well, if I have this parking space available to me, I may as well use a car. Whereas if you didn't have the parking space and you had to purchase it separately, even if the costs were the same, then you might consider other options if you had those available to you, is the thinking there. So bundled parking, that parking available with your housing unit or with your commercial rent tends to result in higher car ownership and higher rates of driving, even when car ownership stays the same. So if you know you're going to have that parking space available, you'll tend to use it more. Uh, next slide, please.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I apologize, but where is that information?
This is coming from state of Oregon, DLCD.
But that, that one source, there's?
All of this, everything that's sourced DLCD came directly from their presentations first.
Has there been like a comparative on other groups that look at this information?
Yeah, so this slide, these slides came from a larger slideshow that I can share with you, and they studied parking in, I think, six other states. They looked at parking in Colorado, California, New Mexico, places where they're unbundling their parking and did a bunch of deep dives. So there is more information available, for sure. Let's see, parking reform. So this is also from DLCD. These slides, these images are from DLCD. They have found that parking reform is spurring small business development because if you don't have to put in the parking and you can rely on on-street parking, then you can develop more of your site, potentially meet a rent point that you couldn't meet previously if you had to include parking with it. Same for small-scale housing, such as the middle housing we've been talking a lot about, as well as affordable housing. A lot of affordable housing projects that were early two thousands ran into parking requirements as one of the biggest burdens because car ownership tends to be much lower in affordable housing. So there was a case to be made that it didn't make sense to have bundled parking with affordable housing, but it took a while for regulations to catch up with that. Next slide, please. So this is, this is how parking management improves or changes, depending on your perspective. One thing that's required here is that we implement what's called best practices for parking code details, and we're going to talk about that in a moment. Then the cities choose a parking reform approach. So there are certain things that are required of everyone. We're going to talk about those in a minute, and then beyond that, you get to choose what to do with what's remaining. Populous communities in the state have to do more parking management. Gladstone's not considered a populous city. That's over twenty-five thousand. Okay, next. So now, everybody who is required to meet CFAC standards is required to do these things. You can no longer mandate development near transit, we already talked about that, within a half-mile. Affordable housing, publicly subsidized housing, less residential units that are less than seven hundred and fifty square feet, SROs, childcare, emergency transitional domestic violence shelters and facilities and residences for people with disabilities and in treatment. And then again, no more than one space per unit for multifamily. So this is a repeat of that previous slide, but I just want to really frame what we have to do, no matter what, we'll be changing our code to do these things by the end of the year. Next slide, please. What is a half a mile from McLaughlin Boulevard? So this, uh, the green area here is, this is from our GIS department at Three J. This is a half-mile buffer of McLaughlin Boulevard. So really, we're not concerned with the west side that's not in because it's Melldren Bar Park. So really, where parking reform can occur in the city outside of the transit corridor here is just east of the green hashed area. Next slide, please. So then we look at, well, where could parking reform actually be implemented? And there, it's most likely to happen on either vacant properties or properties that have redevelopment potential. There is quite a bit of residential property that has redevelopment potential, whether it's, you know, a smaller home on the property that could be added some middle housing or ADU or converted into some other housing type. But by and large, it's residential, it's zoned, single-family or middle housing. It, um, it, it's, it's not commercial, it's not the downtown core. The small amount of commercial that is in this area that could be redeveloped is down by eighty-second Drive. It's toward the bottom of the slide, and then a tiny bit of industrial there, right along the freeway, really, the blue. Okay, next slide, please. So here's another set of requirements. We can't require garages or carports. That's okay, we don't do that. So we don't have to worry about that one, but that is in there. Leased or off-site parking can meet parking requirements. So a developer could come in and say, I don't have any space on my site, but I have another property that's of three hundred feet away that I could put parking on and I can make this work. So that has to be allowed, and there's a certain distance. I, I believe it's up to like a thousand feet, actually. New, larger parking lots are going to be required to provide solar panels or trees and/or have walkability features. So certain requirements, if we require there to still be parking, I don't know how many new, larger parking lots, we'd have this as like fifty or more parking spaces. Based on the map we just saw, I just don't know that there's enough properties that would qualify for that. So that's probably less of a consideration. Ease of conversion of existing parking lots, so anything that's already a surface parking lot, making it easier for that to develop into some type of use. And then again, we mentioned the EV conduit for forty percent of all units of multifamily that's currently existing. Next slide, please. So here are your options, and we'll go into more detail about these. There's three options for what's left. So we just covered everything we have to do, but, you know, now we know, okay, there's some residential properties, a handful of commercial properties, and a couple of industrial properties that we can still require parking mandates on. So how do we want to do that? Well, we could decide to do no mandates at all. That's the first option. We could say, you know, based on what's left, those residential properties, right now we require one per dwelling unit. That seems like a pretty low threshold anyway. People are going to have parking either on the street or on their property. The redevelopment of these parcels is probably not going to be as impactful as going through and changing our development code piece by piece to address everything we have to address. It's really easy to remove all parking mandates. That is definitely the easiest. However, yeah. Mayor Milch.
Well, just for clarification, you talked about a property, a residential property that might decide to convert say, from a single-family home to, let's say, a fourplex.
Okay.
Okay, so if we did not choose option one.
Right.
And we retained current minimums as, as changed by the rules, which you said was one per unit. That unit would have to have four parking spaces. Currently.
Maybe. We'd then get into the minutia of determining if any of the units are under seven hundred and fifty square feet, if any are subsidized. If it, there'd be quite a bit of staff work to do if we kept any regulations.
Okay.
But yes, maybe four, maybe less.
Okay, so if they were a thousand square foot each and not subsidized.
Four parking.
Four parking spaces for a newly, newly-developed fourplex on a former single-family home lot.
Yes.
Okay.
With the caveat that if the, say, the owner owned another property within a thousand feet and said, I'm just going to carve out two more spaces over here, then the city has to figure out how to regulate that and get the agreements in place and things like that.
That's why you get paid the big bucks.
Well, sure.
You have to research all that and figure out all the ways that it can be done.
And that's definitely an option. We can, we can do that.
In that same scenario?
Yes.
But the four units are seven hundred and forty-nine square feet?
Yes.
Then there would be no?
No required parking.
Okay.
Yep, could not require, or if any of them are subsidized in any way, if they provide documentation of anything like that, anything affordable, any are, you know, any kind of care facility. And, and here's where I cringe a little bit, and I'm not sure the state even has an answer for this, but oh, I'm going to build four units and I'm going to run family childcare homes out of all of them, so we're good, right? And I'll, I'll go ahead and get that permitted, but, oh, yeah, I didn't have any kids to come, but I don't need to do. You know, like, I, I can see the gaming of the system already possible, but that's something we have to deal with, right? If we decide to move forward.
May I ask, I know often with these, there's, and maybe the ship has already sailed, but often towns have some means for an exception. Is that, is that anything that is on the table here, or is that something that we can't?
Well.
To say, you know what, we don't want to do this as a city?
We can't have any exceptions to what we've already talked about, but this is the part where you get an exception.
But leading up to that, we?
Everything is set in stone, state law.
No recourse.
No wiggle, no wiggle room.
Yeah, there was actually a lawsuit that just went where a bunch of cities jumped in to try to do that, and they, at no avail. The state won that, and they spent a lot of money on their legal fees trying to fight that, so.
And what was, do you recall, what was the? How, why didn't that work?
Oh, I don't have the summary of the case. I just know that there were many cities that tried to get together to fight the state with those, and the state prevailed. And that was just almost a couple of months ago, that case came out. Yeah.
Yeah, in fact, we were sort of waiting a little bit to make sure that the rules were in place, that all the lawsuits were settled before we were asking you all to make a decision to move forward, because it was sort of up in the air for a while. It was August of last year, I believe, that we asked DLCD to come present and, and talk about what CFAC is to this group. So it's been almost a year that we've been kind of waiting and, and making sure we have this project funded as well, which is being funded from the state. And I think a lot of the case that the cities were making, besides wanting to retain home rule advan- home rule, home rule, is that it was an unfunded mandate when it first came out, too. So there was a lot of question about how you were going to pay for the work that needed to happen with this. So this project for Gladstone is fully funded.
I, I have a question on the funding. If we do choose one of the more red tape laden options, are we billing those hours that are put into?
We have it covered through the grant. So Jackie asked that same question, asked me to sort of back of the envelope. I really do think it's probably a ten thousand dollar difference in just removing all mandates or going through bit by bit and unraveling it, but that is paid for. It, it's part of the grant. We could use that ten thousand dollars for another part of our town center grant. It's all part of the overall seventy-five thousand dollar grant that we have for town center and parking reform. So we, we have the money to do that. The state will pay it, pay for you to do that.
And I think the importance of that is, we want this group to make a decision based on what's best for Gladstone, not what's best for, what's most cost-effective, and what is everybody else doing. So that's a very good question.
Okay, so we talked about what option one is. If you choose option two or three, the bottom section is another must-do for either option one or option two. So regardless of which of those two options you choose, there are requirements that you reduce the burdens of how mandates can be met. So this is, I believe, the area for how far a parking space can be from its property extends. You can waive mandates for certain types of developments. There's a few more types of smaller businesses, properties that have been vacant for two years. There's some other things like that that fall into that category. You're, you reduce or remove your mandates in your metro centers. So our town center that we're working on right now, and we'll talk about this, I have a slide on it, but we have the option of either reducing the parking requirement and having a parking management strategy such as paid parking downtown, or we remove all requirements. And then remove mandates near frequent transit. We've already addressed that, so we're good on that one. So option two, there's two out of five policies you're required to choose. Option three, you choose all of the options. There's no like pick and choose off that one. So if we'll advance the slide, we can look at option. So this is again, with option two or three, two options for the town center. So this one, you'd remove all parking mandates inside and within one-quarter mile of the Gladstone Town Center. And again, this is a little bit of a chicken and the egg discussion for us, because we haven't determined our boundary for our Gladstone Town Center yet. So it's hard to say exactly what impact that would have on parking reform, because we don't know exactly what that polygon will look like. But the other option is to have paid on-street parking with some of the revenues dedicated to public improvements in the area. So that is in, that would be in concert with your urban renewal area with other funds that you're using for downtown redevelopment. You'd reduce your requirement to no more than one-half an off-street parking space per dwelling unit for any housing that's not a townhouse or a row house. Those, you could still require one. And then you'd remove all parking mandates for commercial developments. So in the downtown core overlay, the majority of developments are commercial, so that would have a de facto impact of removing all parking mandates in our downtown core. But if our Gladstone Town Center extends beyond our downtown core into some of the, say, R-five zoning that's nearby, then you would still be able to maintain some parking mandates. If you get far enough, yeah. Oh, thank you. Uh, option two. So here's the fair policies. This is where you get to pick two, but one of the ones you pick has to be out of the top three. They made it really easy. The first two are the unbundling that we've been talking about. So you can choose to unbundle. So again, picture in your mind, I wish I had it, again, the slide with the properties that could redevelop, that, that are most likely to redevelop or develop. You can require that the parking be separate for residential units, be unbundled, or commercial. Or you can require your larger businesses in the city. So this would be any, I believe it's fifty employees. So in Gladstone, it's not a ton of businesses. I didn't get a chance to assess exactly how many, but they would be required to pay a fifty-dollar-a-month stipend to any employee who proves that they use an alternative mode of transportation if they're providing free parking to other employees. So you choose one of those three. You could choose two of those three, or you could choose one of those three as well as taxing any parking lots or mandating no more than a half a space per multifamily. Remember, we're required already to not require over one space per multifamily, so this reduces that in half. So that's the fair policies option two. Option three is called reduced red tape. And this is the one that really would be digging into your code and making sure you're doing all of these things. But here, we're not so worried about seven hundred and fifty square feet. We still are, because we'll already exclude that. But now we're going to exclude studios and one-bedrooms. So now we're looking at the size of the residential structures as well as the bedroom count. Dormitories and group quarters, transit-oriented or mixed-use development, there's some state definitions around that. New uses and expansions. So this is one where new uses and expansions are kind of all the design review that we do. So that sort of limits your parking right there that you can mandate. Lead and reach codes. So those are your, your green design buildings that have, you know, environmental and sustainability factors built in. Buildings vacant more than two years. So anything that sits vacant, the idea is to regenerate that use without requiring without requiring part of the property be used for parking. Any small businesses that are under ten employees or under three thousand square feet, that's the majority of maybe like our commercial along Portland Avenue, but not so along McLaughlin, which we're not even discussing, because it's in our transit exemption area. But maybe could, um, come into play in those, uh, commercial areas along eighty-second Avenue. Some of those are under three thousand square feet, um, some of the buildings there. Any schools, any bars, kind of an interesting add. And a half mile around your metro town center. So previously, if you choose option two or three, you have to go a quarter mile beyond. If you choose option three, you extend that to a half mile. And then you need one residential or benefit district or unbundled parking for all residential. So you either need to establish your downtown parking area, um, for residential benefit or unbundle all parking from residential. So once you unbundle all parking for residential on this one, you're halfway to the previous one. Is a, a thought that some cities have had too, that option three has a lot of different minutia that, that some cities are choosing, actually. Um, next slide, please. So speaking of a half mile around the metro town centers, I just wanted to give an idea of what this might look like. Next slide, please. So I, I think that our town center is going to be larger than our downtown core overlay area. I think, I think we're gonna go beyond the purple that we've designated as our downtown core. But it's, like I said, don't know exactly what that will be, so it's hard to say. But if we were just expanding from the downtown core by a half a mile, then the blue area becomes non-mandated under option three. So just to give you that idea, I, I think, I don't know, but I, I have a feeling the downtown core will go a little further north along Portland Avenue. I think the idea will be to, um, stretch it a little bit further. So m- most of the parking, um, probably west of Oatfield Road will come close to falling into the no mandate area if you choose option three. If you choose option two, it's half of that, because it's a quarter mile. Next slide, please. So here's what other Oregon cities are doing. Um, the ones that are in black are committed. They've either already changed their regulations or they're in hearings to do so. So those are all option one cities, because again, it's the quickest to do that. So, uh, those cities Albany, Ashland, Beaverton, Ben, Central Point, Carvallis, Eugene, Gold Hill, Millersburg, Portland, Salem, Springfield, and Tigard are all either completely done, um, having no mandates or are in the hearings process. Grants passed, like us, we go Milwaukee, Twelton, Weston, and Wilsonville have indicated that they're headed that direction. So they've had their May fourteenth city council meeting and gotten the direction, you know, as we're gonna have. But they've had their version of that, and they've been given direction to move forward with option one. Sherwood has got option two as a, something they're looking into. They haven't finalized that yet. Oregon City is considering option three, and Hillsborough is trying to decide between options two and three. And they're, um, reaching out to their citizens right now to, to their residents to ask them their opinion about it. Next slide, please. So here are those three options again, and here is when we hand it over to all of you to discuss what you see happening for Gladstone for parking reform. Yes.
I have a couple of questions. I'm not sure exactly who to direct these to. Has the business community along Portland Avenue, have they been polled on this, or had it presented to them, and what were their feelings?
So they have, uh, they're part of, some are, of them are part of our, um, stakeholder advisory committee for the Gladstone Town Center. So we did give a, a, a broad overview that parking reform was coming and what the options were. In the materials, we presented them at their first meeting, but that is as far as we've gotten with that body.
And then you used a, a parking grid, a block of both east and west of Portland Avenue for available spaces. How about the citizens along there? Have they been polled on this?
They have not.
Have not. It seemed to me that they're the ones that may bear the brunt of changes in parking.
Well, although we can't make any changes, we can't require any mandates in the downtown core. So no matter what we choose to do, those decisions are made.
Okay.
Yeah. So we're really talking, um, east of. Tammy, would you mind going back to the slide with the green hash mark, please? So really the areas that are in gray. Um, so east of Portland Avenue by maybe two blocks, it's maybe Chicago. That's the area we're talking about.
And, thank you.
Yes.
But I know, I always have questions, but, um, so this doesn't affect our ability to ca- have like a two-hour parking minimum, let's say, on Portland Avenue for businesses or.
Correct.
Along those lines.
The city still has the ability to have parking management zones.
And that, is that throughout this entire area that we're talking about?
Because remember, that's on-street parking, and we're talking about off-street parking when we talk about mandates.
So there could be a situation where, like, say, uh, uh, you know, four units go up and, and they don't have to have parking per se, but the city might do like a two-hour parking thing. That seems like.
Or do some sort of residential permit for certain districts, something like that. Sure.
I have a question. And if somebody came in and put like a, a, a small daycare center in or a facility that would care for people in some way that might require, uh, handicap accessibility or something like that, and we have no parking requirements, could they come back to the city and say, well, you know, we have this building, and now we need you to put us in our own special parking right in front of the building?
I don't believe so, because in order to get, um, approval from the state to license that type of facility, you have to demonstrate that you have those facilities. So they would have to provide them onsite or have a, an agreement with the city prior to getting that permit. So they wouldn't be able to come in and say, we're an approved facility, give us our parking. They wouldn't get approved without demonstrating if they were required to have an ADA parking space, for example. So, because the state licenses all of those facilities.
Right, but could they, so they have no way to come back to the city and say, now I, I, you know, I've, I've got parents picking up kids and no parking, so I, I need.
They could.
You to.
They could certainly come ask the city, but the city would not be obligated to do any type of parking management on their behalf.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, one more.
Go ahead.
One more question. You told, somewhere on one of those slides, it talked about, um, taxing in some way, some of the parking lots. I only have one parking lot in my head in Gladstone. Am I correct in saying that?
I do feel like commercial parking lots are not very common in Gladstone. I don't even know where one is.
The secondary lot that Webster Ridge is still wanting to put in?
Okay.
Technically, that would be what, am I right?
If, if they are charging for the use of the parking, then that would be what the city would tax.
I don't believe they're charging. It was just for the residents. No, they have to pay for those garage parking spots back there. Oh, they do, but they're not all garages back there. There's some, right.
Uh, that might fall into the category of unbundled parking, so that you have an option of whether to pay for it or not. If we were to choose that, at, you, you show the estimated cost of a parking space. I think I read some sources say generally the cost of parking is about one-sixth of the total cost of providing an apartment with parking. So, uh, an apartment that would rent for eighteen hundred dollars, if you unbundled, you might charge fifteen hundred dollars to the apartment and three hundred dollars for the optional parking space. And if somebody decided, hey, that, that building is close enough to transit that I use on a daily basis, I could get along without a parking space, they could rent for fifteen hundred instead of eighteen hundred and forego the parking space. And if happened, as happened at Webster Ridge Apartments, you had a working couple who moved in who both needed a parking space, because they both had a car and wanted to drive to work in different locations. They could rent the apartment for fifteen hundred dollars and then pay six hundred dollars extra and get two parking spaces unbundled. So it's, it's, it's a way of separating the costs, um, but it's all associated with the residence of that place. It's not like it's a public parking space where you buy a ticket and go in in order to, you know, to patronize a business nearby.
Although it could be, if there were some sort of agreements, perhaps if a, say, a multifamily structure and a commercial use were near each other and they wanted to co-manage the parking or something, you could do something like that. That would be permitted, um, under the more flexibility in how parking is, um, permitted. Tammy, if you wouldn't mind, um, moving forward one, I believe. I'm sorry, it's backward, um, backward two, to the option two. There we go. Um, so, oh no, I'm sorry, I can't remember which one that said it on, uh, maybe back to the three options slide. Yeah, um, reduce bar- burdens of how mandates can be met. So we do already have in Gladstone in the parking code, shared parking, um, abilities. So if people, um, are demonstrating that their uses don't overlap significant times, um, and there may be two commercial uses in a same development, they are able to come in and, and make a case for that. But this takes that further and says, like, you don't have to prove that you're, don't have overlapping times if you want to share parking, you can share parking.
So this wouldn't apply to this particular location, because it's within that transit corridor. But if, for example, a dentist office was across the street from a restaurant, and the restaurant did a lot of evening business and needed parking during dinner hours.
Yes.
And the dental office only went until five o'clock, they could arrange to let customers of the restaurant park at the dental office. And it would, if there were mandates involved, it could help satisfy the mandate requirements of both businesses, perhaps. So if we were to go with option two, and the commercial areas to the east of our cities still had some mandates, then that might be a situation that could come up in, uh, there. That, um, that a, an office-type business with opera, which operated daytime hours could share its parking facilities with businesses that primarily had evening.
E- exactly, and I think that's exactly what the state has in mind for the goal of this, is reducing the, um, total amount of asphalt that's being provided and, but still accommodating the needed parking in a community. So sharing parking with, um, non-peak hours is a perfect example of what the state would love to see happen. With option one, there, you know, the, the stance is that either enough of your city is covered by your transit exception and your town center and other mandates that, you know, the market's going to drive all the rest of the parking that happens. Or, like you said, with option two, you unbundle it, or you allow shared parking, and then you're reducing the total amount of parking, but still accommodating the need.
In the mayor's example there, where, uh, there's a reduced burden and there's no formal agreement for shared parking, what's the dispute resolution process?
That is a great question. Um, the city could have one, or they could require that it be completely done privately. The city could take the stance that, hey, we approved it, you came in for this, you figure it out. Currently, if you want to do it, I believe the development code requires you to record a crossover easement to use of the parking areas.
So did I misunderstand then, when you said with the reduced burden, there wouldn't be the need for that agreement?
Correct, that you wouldn't, um, reducing the burden would mean reducing that threshold that you have an agreement in place like that. But that's a great question about how you, because, because arguments do happen over those, or the business changes hands and the new owner wants to do something different, um, but they have this agreement they're beholden to, but it's not a legal agreement. Where, where do I have to do this? And then they come back to the city and say, well, you approved this. And I think at that point, all the city can really say is, yes, we approved it, and it's, it's there, figure it out.
So we just shuffle that off?
We shuffle that off. We do, a- and I, I would, I would hand over these kinds of questions to Jackie. But in my experience, when there's a dispute about a fence or a dispute about a tree, it isn't the city's ability or requirement to get involved. We say that's private property. Your, your fence and your tree and your house are all permitted uses for your residential site. We did our job. We're out.
I see this as differently, though, so that's why I asked.
Yeah.
See that meaning, Yvonne has to get involved, you have to get involved, maybe Marcy goes and talks to him. Obviously Jackie is overseeing that.
One hundred percent, that all would happen. Yeah, that all would happen, but the result would probably be, this is the requirement by the state that we allow this to happen. Now you need to sort it out.
Okay, thank you.
So right now, though, we are talking about Gladstone. We have plenty of off-street parking. I am not a fan of, um, parking meters in downtown Gladstone. Said that out loud. I don't think our business owners would want to lose any of the business that they've worked so hard to get just by the fact that somebody didn't have a quarter or a credit card in their pocket.
Right.
I'm not sure exactly how you pay for that anymore, but see what I mean? So what I, what I wanted to know, we're talking about Gladstone here. How many of these mandates are really going to fit into what we're doing? You know, if, the only, the only thing I do like is residential parking.
Yeah. Well, that is, that is really where the impact can occur with what we're talking about. And I think the mayor brought up a really good example. If someone has a single-family home right now and they have enough space on their property to build three more units, now you have four housing units on your property. No mandates means we don't require anything, right?
Right.
But some mandates means if those units are over a thousand square feet and over one bedroom, each of those units needs one parking space somewhere on that property that's off the street. So there is the ability to do that in certain circumstances. Once you meet those size thresholds and bedroom thresholds, you can then require it of those residential units. Tammy, would you mind going back to the slide that has the lots that are, um, potential with redevelopment or vacant? Yep, thank you. So this is where we could, could see parking mandates occur. So anything in the green, so anything to the west of maybe Chicago.
Right.
You can't require parking.
Right.
But anything east of that, you could, right? If you're putting in three more units on your single-family property and all the units are over seven hundred and fifty square feet and two bedrooms, which, and they are, you know, we've probably reviewed a dozen, um, uh, middle housing applications, and I would say the majority are two-bedroom units that are going in. So I would, I would say, and, and over over seven hundred and fifty square feet, most of them.
Does this include ADUs? Because I believe we said it, seven forty for ADUs.
Yeah, ADUs, you can't require any parking of.
Right, so this is.
They are completely exempt already.
Okay.
Yep. ADU came in with middle housing, um, ADUs and duplexes for a city the size of Gladstone. Duplexes, one per unit, ADUs, zero, and, and can't require, um, what, uh, parking or requiring it to have the same materials as the house. Other ADUs became really flexible with how you can build them and put them on the property with the middle housing, which was, um, HB two thousand and one in, um, twenty nineteen. So it did predate the CPEC rules. Yep.
I think we instituted that change early in twenty twenty in Gladstone. Uh, on the ADU part. My thoughts on this. It would be very simple to just remove mandates across the entire city. But I think there are situations where redevelopment of some of this land that's here. And it wouldn't be all of this, because the other requirement about that quarter mile from the
Right.
Town center will remove some of that. But, um, I think there might be value in terms of what the public feels about the need for, for some parking mandates to, to exercise, maybe it's option two, that would, where we would have a defined area where we could still, where we could, uh, do some of those other options, but still impose some mandates. And, and again, imposing mandates doesn't mean no one is going to build parking. The person who wants to do it in the cheapest possible way will do no parking. But the person who realizes that you're more likely to rent an apartment that has some parking is going to put parking in and figure out what the market is for it. So, uh, it's not as though every park, every building constructed in, uh, in the transit area or other areas is gonna have no parking. It's just not gonna be required, mandated parking.
Should we?
But I'm starting to lead, lead toward, lean toward, uh, something in option two.
Let's look at the option two, um, slide so that we can, it's forward just maybe two. There we go. Um, so in this one, as a reminder, you pick two of the five bullet points, and one has to come out of the first three.
Does that second one affect us all? Does that second one affect us all that much?
It does in the small amount of commercial and industrial along 82nd and along 205, it would be those properties. Yep. But again, these are, let me pull up. I think it's 50, 50 employees that triggers this. I'm not sure if there are businesses that size.
That's sort of why I was asking.
Yeah.
I don't believe we have.
They're all pretty small businesses.
No, no mandate for the dealerships. And then the school district, I think maybe employees close to that number of people, but they're not in that area either. Correct.
So if school district employees are allowed to park in the parking lot at the high school, let's say, if they teach there.
Yes.
If, does that mean that a teacher who maybe doesn't even park there right now, maybe walks to work or takes a bus to work, they could, if we adopted that rule, they could say, you got to give me an extra $50 a month because I'm not using the parking lot.
But they, not the school because it's in the transit exemption area.
Oh, it's in that area anyway. Okay.
Yes. So really, I don't.
There'd be the middle school then. Kracksburger.
Possibly, if there are over 50 employees there.
Well, I would think it would, I don't know if it would involve just that school or the entire district.
That was my clarification.
Yeah. I, I think Kracksburger and the district office together probably have more than 50 employees. So maybe.
Possibly, possibly.
I don't want to burden the school district with having to pay their employees if they were the only first company, company in the city of Gladstone with over 50 employees in one location.
Mayor, Councilor Rieckel's on the Zoom and has a question.
Councilor Rieckel, go ahead.
So just kind of picking up on the school district situation. Since they are technically government employees, are they not? Would that necessarily apply? Because it's not commercial property or residential. So I don't know if that would even apply, or maybe I'm totally wrong. I don't know.
That's a great question. If, if you were to choose the third bullet point, and if any of the, i- it's employer. So the, the third bullet point isn't specific to commercial or industrial. It's any employer.
Okay, thank you.
It is very complex. I'm just pulling it up to give the number of employees to.
My assumption is that anybody, let's say, a, a school teacher who chooses not to drive, they'd have to apply for that $50.
Yes.
That's the whole, is that a process that goes through? What process does that happen? Is that through the city, the school?
I'll read you the full ORS.
That, that'll help.
Well, a requirement for employers of 50 or more employees who provide free or subsidized parking to their employees at the workplace, provide a flexible commute benefit of $50 per month or the fair market value of that parking, whichever is greater, to those employees eligible for that free or subsidized parking who regularly commute via other modes instead of using that parking. No, I think what we as the city, if we were to choose option three, we would require the school district or whoever the employer is with more than 50 employees to, to demonstrate to us that they meet this. You give us how you're implementing this. And then we say, yep, good to go. There are two other options there that you might want to choose instead because this one might get kind of complicated. Although unbundling parking, I'm, sorry, Tammy, I wish this worked. Would you please go back to the slide with the properties that are vacant and, oh, wait, am I, oh, you did it. Okay. Because I think if you're talking about unbundling multifamily residential, I don't know that there's any zoning for that. I believe this is all, R, R 7.2 and R5 is all of the yellow, but I'm just going to verify that really quickly.
We have some existing multifamily. The Webster Ridge Apartments and the other apartments on the other side of Webster.
Yes.
So I suppose they could, they could phase in new rules there. They, if, if a unit became available, they could say, from now on, you know, we'll unbundle the parking.
They could, but they wouldn't be required to unless they redeveloped. So the city wouldn't come in and say, new rule, you have to do this now. I don't believe it's retroactive to existing developments.
Okay, that's.
But I, I will verify that before we meet in May to make sure that that's absolutely accurate. But it's my understanding that it's applicable to vacant and redevelopable. Do you want to go back to the slide with option two to see what the other? Oh, yes. Oh, you fixed it. Thank you. Um, okay. So the other options are, like we said, unbundling from residential units, unbundling from commercial units, the flexible commuter benefit. And then as an option, tax on parking lot revenue. Again, maybe we have one parking lot or maybe not. So that may not be something that we can do. But if you mandate it, it meets the letter of the law maybe, but not the intent. And then new multifamily limited to half a space per unit. I'm just going back to this map to verify zoning.
In the tax on commercial parking lot revenues, would that only be parking lots for the intent of commercial parking?
Yes.
Would that include unbundled rental revenue?
I believe it's just parking lots that you're, you're, like, the kind that you pay $5 to park there for two hours, like Smart Park and things like that. But I can look at the ORS because I have it open right in front of me.
We have none in the city.
Of which we have none in the city. Right. So if you decided to say, yep, we're going to do that, you'd be meeting the requirement, but it wouldn't be making any actual change. Yes.
Two and four would be relatively inconsequential.
So the tax on parking revenue. Yes, a tax on the revenue from commercial parking lots, collecting no less than 10% of income with revenues dedicated to improving transportation alternatives to drive alone travel. So if it's a commercial parking lot, you're just selling the parking. That's the only thing it's used for, which we don't have any of. And that is that one.
We don't have it currently, but we hear people saying, one of the big needs for our downtown is to have more parking. So if the new owner of the lot at the corner of Arlington and Portland Avenue decided that the best thing for, for their restaurant, which they also happen to own, and the other businesses in that area would be to have a surface parking lot where people could pay to park and be very close to the, to the most active businesses in the region.
Yes.
Then they could open a commercial parking lot there. And, and we could, we could choose to tax part of that revenue and then use that revenue to enhance the rest of that, of that region.
Yes.
So the parking would not just be a burden to the, well, it would, a lot of businesses would think that parking in that situation would help them get more customers. And it would not just be at the cost of having to pay for parking, but that, that some of the revenue of that parking would be directly helping in other ways. You know.
I don't think our business owners.
You don't think?
Oh, no.
Well, yeah, and there's, there's the question of whether, and, and what other options would they, would they prefer? Would we, would we make other non-commercial parking lots available with shuttle buses or an agreement that you could park? Are people allowed to park in the city hall parking lot if they want to walk to a restaurant? Suppose somebody opens a restaurant closer to this end of Portland Avenue. Do we have a policy? It is public parking. Okay.
Same with the community center parking. There's parking there. That's public parking. That people could park there and walk downtown.
Even, even during hours that the community center is open.
Yes, we, we have people sometimes that will leave their car there because they're going out of town for a night and it's a safe place. They know there's cameras available next to the police department. We monitor that to make sure it's not excessive, but it is a public parking area.
Is that true of the parking near John Wetton along, let's say, the diagonal parking there? What road is?
That is school parking.
That, on Exeter, that's school parking.
Yes.
On that street.
It's on, on-street parking, but it's school parking? Are we talking about the diagonal at the park?
That would be Exeter.
The park too.
Fairfield, Exeter, yeah. Okay.
And I've often seen, seen teachers and employees park there.
Yeah, and they maintain that area as well.
Okay.
Is that option for tax rate, is, is the rate identified in the?
Minimum 10%.
10%?
Minimum 10%.
No less than 10% is the exact language. The, just to circle back on whether an existing multifamily would be subject, like Webster Road Apartments, it's, it says that the parking spaces for each residential unit and multi-unit housing developments would be unbundled upon lease creation, lease renewal, or sale. So lease renewal makes me think that if a new unit, if a unit turned over, we would be subject to requiring the existing place to then unbundle that parking space. So, and then for the commercial, it's a requirement that parking spaces serving leased commercial developments be unbundled parking upon lease creation or renewal. So anything outside of the green area, we would be talking about when their leases renew. I don't know how we would know that their leases are renewing, but we would figure that out if we decided to go with that option. Business license, maybe, maybe.
There's a whole administrative component in here, depending on, upon which option we go back. And I get back to Councilor Garland's question of, for Gladstone, a lot of these fit bigger cities. And, and so I'm looking at this through many different lenses because I, I do think there would be issues in our community with imposing fees and taxes on parking. How do we, how do we administer that? How do we know how much revenue they're bringing in? So those are the, the kind of administrative things that I'm looking at.
Do you have a preference, Jackie, on what to do?
I don't at this point. You know, I can understand why most cities are just going with option one.
Yeah.
No mandates, because that probably also has maybe the, the least impact for us. But I feel like there's still a lot of unknowns with option two and three, just like we're trying to provide you answers for. I don't think the state has thought through some of those enforcement issues and accountability and all of that. That's what concerns me.
Is there an option for another exemption, another?
Extension. No, it's a one, one-time extension available, especially because they are funding this work. So.
When is our decision needed?
December 31st of this year. So you do have some time. We could certainly ask the state to come May 14th. Evan Manville, who's the expert on this, could come and answer your questions if there's an answer available or join us remotely. Or we could do another work session if we feel like that would be helpful.
Work session, town hall, because I'd really like to see some citizens give input, and especially the business owners that will be impacted on Portland Avenue. I feel kind of like the blind leading the blind at this point without getting some input from.
Remember, the business owners on Portland Avenue, the decision is made. There is no parking mandate.
There's no parking mandate.
So in the downtown core and then in the town center or whatever, we decide that to be, there will not be parking mandates.
I, I do think Mayor Milch, to your point, out of option two, there are some that would present relatively low burdens for us to meet in the city based off of our makeup. And the, you know, the public will have an option to weigh in on this as it goes through the process. So I wonder, I, I think if we're concerned about the burden on the school district for the flexible commute benefits, I think that's probably one of the only folks that would be impacted by option three. But if we're concerned about that burden, then I would, I would think maybe can, looking at option, bullet number two and potentially bullet number four. I know we would like to see parking lot biz, business somewhere around the, the core. But I, I think the likelihood of that happening and the likelihood of a 10% tax being a deal breaker for that are probably relatively low. I'm curious what people's thoughts are on bullets two and four.
So Jacob, you're saying that by doing those two, we could still have mandates in that other portion of the city with the, the orange circled properties. But it wouldn't, it, and, but, but enacting those two things wouldn't really impose too much of a burden on anybody in the, in the dish, in the areas we have now.
Exactly.
All right. I'm sorry. I interrupted you, Council Roberts. Go ahead.
I was going to add on to that. I'm of a similar opinion. I like those options, number two and four. My question, I think to Heather here is, is it above board? Is it legitimate to say, we'll tax it at the minimum 10% and we'll put it in a slush fund? And then the city decides, we can let the, the citizens decide what within the allotted uses that goes towards? Because if they have to pay it, then it should be their decision.
Yeah.
And like this, because if it is a deal breaker, then let's make it not a deal breaker.
Yeah, so it has to be dedicated to improving transportation alternatives to drive alone travel. So you certainly could, you, you have your traffic safety board, you could convene a, you know, parking board to, to determine that if you wanted input. But it would have to go toward alternatives to drive alone. So maybe it's bike parking, bike lanes, transit connectivity, sidewalk improvements, things like that.
Yeah, because if it's things like sidewalk improvements, that's things people will get excited about. I like that.
Yeah.
Increasing, you know, the walkability, the safety of our city. That's, that's extremely exciting. That's a hypothetical on if we have paid parking.
Right.
Right.
First place.
Right.
So if there's like the minimal impact route, it seems like that would be kind of, that's something that doesn't really exist here anyways, if we're trying to do as little as.
Process of elimination of what's going to impact us.
Yeah.
The least.
Yes. And then.
Constitutes a lot.
But a, a, a commercial, it, it's, the ORS specifically says a tax on the revenue from commercial parking lots. I'm sure they define commercial parking lot as well.
I'm assuming it's, it's like what they have in downtown Portland where you put in your money, you get your ticket, you put it on the dashboard and you go about your business.
I, I don't think there's any minimum number of spots. You could have two spots that you rent out.
And that would have to be, no, it doesn't have to be commercial.
Well, I, I do have this question written down that we'd need to get clarification on because I, I'm hearing that where this might occur would be somewhere along Portland Avenue or in the downtown core where parking is not mandated. So I don't know if then this would apply or if we're only talking outside of our mandate area. It's not clear from the language. So I'd like to clarify that.
Clarification on that.
Because if you only think you'll ever have a paid parking lot in your downtown core and then we can't tax it, then, I mean, maybe you still want to go with that option, but it wouldn't have that benefit of being able to tax it.
I would like to think in the distant future that we will see more commercial development over in the area near Safeway and the river and the DMV. And there is a big parking lot there with businesses. I couldn't even name a single one that's in there because I don't frequent it very often. But it would be nice to think that at some point in the future, that would develop into a similar kind of a popular destination-oriented commuter, you know, a, a commercial area in Gladstone. And it might be a place, if people put restaurants, there is one restaurant over near there. If people had restaurants or, you know, a wine bar or whatever else where people wanted to go, then a commercial parking lot might make sense there at some point in the future. We're not there now, but that would be in an area where there would be no question that we could tax revenue for it if, you know, if, if it ever happened.
And at the same time, if they never charged for parking, then we would never have. And at the same time, if they never charged for parking, then we would never have to talk to them.
Yeah, exactly. So again, as, as Commissioner Reese says, it's a very low, uh, impact, uh, way of, of following the rule.
In my, in my view, it'd be a deterrent to anyone wanting to do a commercial parking lot if there was the tax on it also.
Which, I, I like that.
Well, unless, I guess, unless the value of knowing that some of that income would benefit, uh, other, uh, other infrastructure, like, you know, then it would be used to make sidewalks, which make your business more accessible and more parking. One other thing, all of this talk about climate friendly is mostly having to do with automobiles. But it occurred to me that during the pandemic, one of the ways that people reduced their use of automobiles was by commuting from home. Uh, I mean, working from home.
Right.
Uh, and that, um, that maybe a, a more reliable, uh, uh, broadband service in some areas of town might be another investment that would reduce, uh, people's dependence on automobiles. Not that they get rid of their cars, but they wouldn't have to depend on them so much if it were easier to, to do a lot of what they do via, uh, you know, telecommuting. I want to check and see, okay, I don't see any hands raised on other people.
Um, I'm just gonna go back to option two again, since we're talking about this one. Um, so of the top three, um, if you were to choose, are you leaning toward one or need more information? We have to have one of the top three and then any other one.
Can you kindly go through and explain like number two, the second one, one more time about rented spaces?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna read it to you first and then we can talk about it. Okay. I'm gonna find it first. So bullet two reads, a requirement that parking spaces serving leased commercial developments be unbundled parking upon lease creation or renewal. So for example.
Office building.
Yeah, if.
Tenants and, uh, that you have to pay for your parking spots for your employees.
Right, so if Safeway is not, does not own the underlying property or any of the other businesses in that area at the time that their lease renews, we then need to require that they unbundle their parking in their lease. And that may be as simple as them saying, we're gonna pay fifty thousand a month for our building and ten thousand a month for our parking. We did it, but they have to demonstrate it at the time their lease renews, which I guess would probably then be part of our business license review.
Then we're asking for a copy of their lease to know when it's up for renewal.
And same for the multifamily, because you do charge, or you do have a business license for multifamily, um, people who are landlords, you have a business license, yeah, so I would assume that would be the the way you would do that is you would use your business license each year to determine if, um, leases are renewing. And unbundled parking for one of those two options.
And with them, I guess in your opinion, maybe I'm missing some stuff, would that make it more difficult for businesses to succeed here in the city or?
I don't know.
All of a sudden Safeway's gonna hate us and leave.
Well, um.
It doesn't necessarily mean they're gonna have to pay more, right?
Right.
I guess that's what it comes down.
Right.
They could say, okay, or at least right, like you're saying, it's sixty thousand dollars a month, let's just say fifty thousand dollars a month and we pay ten thousand dollars a month for parking. The whole idea, right, is to have people, less people on the road.
Yeah.
Less people driving.
Sure.
Yeah. And, and fewer asphalt parking spaces if we don't really need more of those.
And that's hard in a community that thinks we need more parking.
Yeah, right.
Right, that's the difficulty with this.
Yeah. So I do, I do think that there would be significant administrative burden with any of these.
But any of them.
Including option number one?
Yes, because then you're asking for the lease renewal for any residential.
For option number one.
Oh, option one is, no, I'm, I'm speaking only of the five.
No, I was talking about option number one where there's no.
Option number one, no, has no administrative. Besides getting through the hearings process of, um, changing the development code to remove all parking mandates, there is no ongoing administrative burden for option one.
So in other words, whatever is dictated by the state and what we currently have in our codes would stay the same.
Our code would be rewritten by December thirty-first of this year to remove any required parking, but we would maintain our parking dimensional standards and landscaping because if someone decides to provide it because it's driven by the market, we would then require them to meet our requirements.
Okay.
Like we just did on the ICSB expansion.
Right.
They weren't required to provide parking, but they wanted to, so we required that they met our standards.
Correct, okay.
Well, I'm not willing to let go of the, at least one per residential unit. Just, uh, you know, uh, there's too many houses in Gladstone that have two, three, four cars and the problem is when you don't allow for parking where someone lives, the, that parking burden now moves to your next door neighbors in front of their house because you've got two or three cars lined up on the street. And it's not fair to your neighbors. It's not neighbor friendly, uh, anyway.
It's a safety hazard because you cannot see. I live on Dartmouth.
Yeah.
And they're all rentals and they're right up to where my approach is to get on the street. And it's very scary backing out of my driveway because you can't see because there's cars on both sides lined up and down.
Right.
You don't have a clear vision.
I will say that, um, a counterpoint to onsite parking is that a typical driveway for one vehicle is sixteen feet wide and that is about the width of an on-street parking space. So it is a one-for-one when you look at it that way, that you're exchanging out your on property parking space for your on-street parking. Where that gets messed up is on garbage day, which is once a week or recycling day, whatever. Streetsweeper day, um, when properties have tandem parking available where you can park two, um, down the driveway, then you're getting two in the space that an on-street is one, so it's not, it's not a hard and fast rule, but there is a potential for more on-street parking when you don't require that driveway cut or a, an off-street parking space.
From the traffic safety perspective and being on that board for quite some, you know, for a long time, I know hit and runs were an issue and a lot of those were parked vehicles um, on many streets that we're talking about in the grid, which you talked about on Dartmouth. But that was always my issue with some of these, you know, the middle housing, stuff like that, there'd be more cars on the street and we see the impact of that, but that's out of our hands in a big section of this because we can't do anything about it, right?
Right. So your, yeah, your entire kind of downtown core and then.
So where the problem exists, we, yeah, I'm kind of, okay.
And if you go down there to, um, Exeter and Fairfield, right, it's just obvious, you've got the diagonal parking.
Right.
That way and just put along the curb and you cut half those parkings. So diagonal parking's a good thing.
Yeah, if you have the depth to be able to place it. Yeah, and I, I think that comment too about, you know, the folks who already are in the green hash mark, you know, they didn't make the choice to be in the green hash mark, so you're kind of holding them to a different standard than people outside the green hash mark. There's a, a bit of an equity thing there too, I would say.
Yeah.
And I know we've talked a bit about the, uh, administrative burden for bullet point number two on option two. Uh, but I, I do think there's, with that business license renewal, we do have a moment when we can ask businesses, where you, or if you are renting, were you offered unbundled parking? And that kind of becomes our mechanism to know whether the businesses are upholding what we've mandated.
True, yeah.
And it puts the onus on them.
Yeah, exactly.
And it also may give a business that really doesn't need as much parking, uh, maybe someplace where, uh, it's intensive on a small number of employees being there. And if it's next door in close proximity to a business that really could use more because you have customers coming all then, then they could share and rent from the other, uh, or, or whoever owns the property. So that, um, I, I think that flexibility might be an improvement, uh, for some businesses. Uh, who say, boy, if I had more parking, I'd get more customers. Well, if you can rent it from the person next door who doesn't use their parking, instead of being people said, this is mine and I'm the only one who can use it. We have signs on Portland Avenue, uh, saying, you know, this parking is limited to this particular business and it's empty half the time. And if, if those business owners were more flexible and allowing it to be public all the time, uh, there wouldn't be the same perception of a shortage of parking, of off-street parking.
I wonder how insurance plays into that though, incidents on.
Well, yeah, and I don't know that aspect of it, that's right. Yeah.
I missed the first part of that, say that again.
Oh, the how insurance might play into that, you know, as far as if you're opening up your parking lot to, let's say, a bar or something like that.
I can, I can answer to that because, um, I assisted Ford's of the fifties some help because I knew the current owner of where the dry cleaners is and they own that parking lot. And they had sold, and that's one of the questions that the new owner asked is, do they have insurance coverage, this, this nonprofit organization? And in order for them to use that lot for the car show for during the community festival, they had to supply, uh, proof of insurance and a bunch of information because of liability reasons. This new owner wanted all of it, which is standard business. Um, so, yeah, that, that would be the issue if there was going to be sharing and whatever, they'd have to have coverage and whatnot. That would cover that, and I don't know if insurance companies would do that, um, or not.
I have a, um, I think a question. It, it appears to me that whatever one of these options that we pick were locked into, it's pretty hard to change.
Well, well, the, the legislation is really clear that you can change between two and three anytime. If you, if you pick one, you're set. You don't go back from one, but if you pick two or three, you can swap in and out, is, is what it says.
But, uh, and I'm ninety-nine percent sure the mayor was on the planning commission at the time that parking at the Webster Road Apartments became a, an option again, or the, the need for more. And, and the, one of the reasons it was given was to change in demographics, how, how we live as people. And, uh, they just, instead of having one person or a couple living there, they would have two or three adults in a two-bedroom apartment, each of which had cars. So it, it's kind of hard to see, you know, tomorrow even, you know, what the changes are gonna be
Yeah.
uh, in Gladstone. And the other thing is the no mandates, and that seems to be the, uh, may, maybe the best of option. But no mandates basically puts the city of Gladstone in the business of providing parking on their streets. If you, and I know, I know the particular area is exempt, but if you go west on Arlington across ninety-nine and go north on River Road, it is a solid line of cars, all employees at the car dealers. And City Gladstone provides that parking.
Right.
So that's, that's the, perhaps the unintended consequence of no mandates.
And to your point, where, where I live, same thing, you see the business, there's a zombie copy and then there's the dance studio and then there's the construction place. You go down there any day and you can't, and, and they park right in front of my house and then on the other side of the house, then they go down to the cul-de-sac and take up both sides of the cul-de-sac. So if you're gonna come to my house, you're parking down by Chicago to walk through, you know what I mean? And you can't do anything about that because it's public parking and those are the employees, you know, so we are sort of in the business of providing parking.
Yeah. Well, and, and, and the way we're doing it is providing free parking. We're, we're not, uh, you know, we don't have any, um, uh, paid parking uh, or any policies that would encourage, and, and I think some of the businesses, uh, have in the past encouraged their employees to park at, uh, a fair distance away. Um, uh, when we were talking about whether we would have a parking mandate for the new library, one of the things we considered was how many parking, uh, spaces the city hall had been using when, when that building was a city hall and police station. And I think it was something you told me, Jackie, at the time, like eighteen employees were parking in that area. When we moved to this building with, with much more parking spaces than that here, that was a net gain for the downtown because no longer was that building occupied by a lot of employees who were parking nearby. Uh, but a lot of those employees also, uh, made the choice on behalf of the public they serve to carpool or take the bus or park a, a, a distance away and walk in so that those space, spaces would be available. And I'm hoping that the business owners in downtown are making similar decisions that, that a small business that only has one or two spaces, that those aren't occupied by the people who work there. And then they're saying, where are my customers gonna park?
With the exception of businesses that might have to like deliver, they're.
Yeah, yeah, there, there are some where you need to be adjacent to it.
Some like, you know, older folks who run some businesses too, who might not be totally able-bodied to go.
Well, we have an HVAC business down there that has a lot of vans that are used to, to, to take their business to their services to other people. So they need to be able to park onsite, so they have access to parts and all the rest. So those kinds of businesses certainly need to have immediate access, but, uh, others.
Regardless of down, Portland doesn't matter in this country.
Yeah, that's right.
So we're not talking about, we love talking about it.
It, it's easy, I, I bring it up a lot because it's easy to visualize the examples and then to imagine them in other parts of the city where it's not as much of a problem or an issue right now. Because I still think we'll see commercial development on the east end of Gladstone someday. Uh, so, so I, what I'm hearing is, option one is certainly the simplest, but that removes all mandates everywhere and there's no going back. Option two would allow us to preserve some mandates, so, uh, uh, with, with some not terribly, um, consequential rule changes to go along with it. Um, and I'm not hearing much for option three because I think that's the one that then reduced even the was that the one that took it down to half a space?
Yes.
And, and Counselor Garland, so you expressed what I think a lot of people feel. If you go too low on your mandates for a residential, you get those issues in neighborhoods.
I'm sorry, that's, uh, option five on option two is, so.
Oh.
Um, you don't have to do that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, uh, but on this one, you do expand the town center bout, buffer to a half mile from the quarter mile that it is, um, going to be for option two or three. And then here you're looking at, um, number of bedrooms in a building in addition to the seven hundred and fifty square foot. Um, you're exempting schools, but yeah, so this had a lot more exemptions.
Yeah, no matter what, the parking spaces are being reduced.
Right, uh, mandated parking spaces.
Okay.
Yeah. Parking, parking mandates are being reduced, yeah, no matter what.
Yeah.
Yes.
You put up that, uh, the, the first one where you showed the cities that pick which option.
Oh, yeah, you got it.
I'm intrigued why Sherwood picked options two.
Why I wanted to go back and then.
And I think that it's the path of least resistance that you get to. If we're wanting to have some mandates and some control over that, but still know that the options that we pick in option two, aren't really gonna impact us. And because we do have a business license, we have a mechanism in place where we could control some of those. So from a staff perspective, I'm supportive of trying to go down that option too, if that's kind of where we're leaning as a group.
All our neighboring cities except Oregon City are, are going with one. Which doesn't matter, I just pointed that out, you know, I mean.
Heather, is DLCD gonna look at us and laugh for choosing the options that are of very little to almost no consequence to the city and say no? Or are we meeting their minimum requirements and we're doing what they're telling us to do?
You're meeting their minimum requirements and when we write the staff reports, update the code, if we go this route, we would talk about how we anticipate that there could be commercial parking, um, leased in the future. That if you're choosing to unbundle commercial, that does have an impact, that or residential, if you choose one or two, there will definitely be an impact. And we'll talk about how we'll administer that, we'll have to come up with that and.
But we can do that.
Uh huh, yeah. Yeah.
I mean, I'm, two and four look good.
Yeah.
Well, I trust that everyone can make it look good, but will they, will they see that?
I mean, these are the options, so we still will have to do, don't forget, we still have
The other.
Um, requirements to, um, update our code to, we're, we're going to have a lot of code updates. This will be a big package because we still have to talk about large parking lots and what has to happen there. Um, we have to do leased or off-site parking, can meet parking requirements, so that's for anyone. You can have your parking off-site. We have to do leased or off-site parking can meet parking requirements, so that's for anyone. You can have your parking off-site. You can convert your existing parking lots. In addition. We will, um, we are implementing the no parking mandates um, near transit, but we haven't codified that yet. So we'll need to update our development code to put that in. We'll be adding affordable housing, public subsidized housing. We'll talk about those residential units and the size. So anything under seven hundred and fifty square feet. Single room, childcare facilities, all of these things. And then one space per multifamily. Right now, we're at one point five. So our package of code updates will be significant um, with any of the options that we choose.
I may ask.
Yeah.
Uh, if we look at option two, uh, and if we, let's say, we consider the bullet point two, which is the commercial. Separate from units compared to, let's say, number three, which maybe on the. As far as staff side, I'm curious to see which would be less of a burden.
Probably three, but there I would want to, I would recommend you have discussions with the businesses that are the organizations that would be impacted before you mandate that. Unless the city is willing to subsidize it, I suppose.
And we kind of determine that just, you know, anecdotally, but that it's the school, it's Kracksburger specific in that.
Although I made a note to ask if that is all employers of fifty and more. If you would then require that of the dealerships. I don't know that you're exempt from that based on not requiring minimum parking mandates. If you go with number three. I'm not sure if that's all employers in the city over fifty.
Or just the ones that are.
Or just the ones that are in the exemption area. Right, so I have that. I don't know the answer to that. Yeah, it doesn't say.
Do employees at car dealerships ride their bike tour?
They're not given a car to work there.
There's one of those statistics about Gladstone that we get from the state and it says that we have, you know, there's populations about twelve thousand. But we have three thousand people who um. What, who live outside of Gladstone but work in Gladstone. And five thousand people who live in Gladstone and work outside of Gladstone. And I always wished, boy, if we could get two thousand people to those to trade jobs, just think how much less driving there would be. So um, you know, maybe if, maybe if uh, we. Had that and and encouraged local businesses to pay a bonus to people who worked locally and didn't need to drive to work. It would, it would have the impact of making some of those changes, but we're not here for social engineering necessarily. Well, we sort of are, but I mean, that's. You know, I I spoke up and expressed a preference for option two, only because I wanted to to retain a little, a little bit of control over over parking mandates. But I'm hearing some people say one, some people say two, some people maybe not having a preference. Would you mind going around and just kind of letting the council know where where you feel? Because just because I spoke up first doesn't mean that that uh, you need to go by what I said. And I want to be sure that I'm not exerting an influence that everybody say, well, I really would have preferred just to do one. So would would people? One.
I have no preference.
One. I would say two with two and four is the choice.
At this point, I I seem to favor option two with with more information on bullet three and um, four for the parking lot revenue. I see that as being. Good way to go.
I'm liking option two with two and four.
I I'm in the same boat. I'm curious your thoughts on. We heard from the city staff about the burden of uh, the. Unbundling on commercial, but I I guess from the market perspective, if you think that would be a significant.
I, yeah, that that's kind of what I've been thinking about the whole time we're talking about it. I just, I'm not sure that um, the area that this would be touching would um. Really impact to the point of what we would have to do to sort of manage everything. I haven't seen that in real life. It's been something that a lot of people have talked about for a lot of years, but I've never seen it in practice. That makes me nervous.
Well, I'll I'll say. Two with two and four, but a consideration for three instead of two, if if we think that's you know, more doable.
I'm agreeing with this side of the table.
I honestly, I'm I'm between one and two only because I uh, I feel like our options for number two. I like option two because we hold a little bit of the control still and the ability to kind of switch between some of the options over the course of the years. If something changes, we're able to kind of switch so that the the fact that we would maintain some control. I like that. However, the options that we have, given the space that it would be impacting. I don't know if we would see the impacts that we want. So. No preference, I guess. It could go both ways.
I'm right there.
And 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 depending on what she finds out, well, the way of clarifications.
I I I was gonna throw out a hypothetical, uh, because of the way it's written, let's assume it applies to all employers in the city over fifty. Let's just, let's just say that. And then if it doesn't, you know, we'll bring that back, but or or maybe you give your opinion based on both scenarios, right? If you have to implement this for any employer who has more than fifty employees, and we're assuming the dealerships do have more than fifty employees.
They definitely do.
Okay, so.
Especially Toyota, that's.
We're talking dealership, school district, including the high school, then probably Safeway, yep. Maybe some industrial. Maybe, no, probably not. And not the city. So assuming you would have to um, require. Demonstration that this policy exists for those companies and organizations. Now, it's fifty dollars a month per employee who demonstrates that they use other modes on a regular basis, so. Is that a significant burden to any of those groups? I don't know, maybe not.
Would the company have any, would they have to like let their employees know? That necessarily, would they even necessarily know, like?
I I think you would have to let the employees know.
I'm not saying that they shouldn't. I'm just wondering.
I'm gonna back to Counselor Roberts' question if DLCD would laugh at us, and I think if we tried to do that, we probably would get laughed.
I'm certainly not saying, like, saying for anybody to be, I'm just wondering if from the businessperson's perspective, if they would have.
I mean.
If there's a mechanism to force them to to do that.
I I would think that they would have to do that. I think it would be part of what you see in your lunchroom when you get your bully and you get your, here's what minimum wage is. I think it would be like, hey, you have this. You have this ability to get this credit, you know, yeah.
I have a question. Um, I work for a company that uh, before my job now, but they gave us bus passes. In order to not have to uh, rent parking spaces in downtown Portland.
Yeah.
So I wonder if um, there's any leeway between that. I mean, if they're already paying for a bus pass. To people that have chosen to lessen their carbon footprint. I would think that that would um. The bus pass would far outweigh that fifty dollars and to have to give an employee both of those, if that was something that people are already getting. Because I don't think a bus pass is forty dollars anymore like as a kid.
I don't know what they are, but I work for companies in downtown Portland and it was like, here's your free bus pass. Yeah.
Yeah, and all students. Get it in, at least in Portland schools. Um, I'm just like, a hundred dollars a month is the.
For a bus pass?
So this would get you half for adults aged six, eighteen to sixty-four.
So they demonstrate that they're providing the bus pass, that would.
I mean, the the legislation is clear that it's a dollar sign and the number fifty, so I think they have to give fifty dollars. But if they. Yeah, I I don't think you could say, but we gave them a bus pass, so it qualifies.
So they'd have to give them the hundred dollars.
It doesn't say.
Which means it would probably probably no longer provide the bus pass if they had to.
Yeah.
Which is a reduction.
Fifty on this fifty dollars.
Uh, may we, can we do a five-minute recess? Are we wrapping up here? Okay, I just wanted.
Well, I appreciate getting that feedback, um, so uh, so that the council. Will have, you know, after everybody has seen this and thought about it, we'll we'll have some guidance on where to go in May when we look at it.
We didn't ask. Oh, sorry.
Oh, that's right. I did, I didn't ask. Counselor Riechel. And Counselor, uh, I don't know if Counselor Cook ever got on. And and, oh, Commissioner Mercero and Counselor Riechel. I'm sorry, uh, I didn't get all the way around the circle and ask you your thoughts of this. But um, among these options, what are you thinking? Would would you prefer?
Well, I'll speak up and say that um, for me, just looking at it, I think. You know, we don't have to make a specific decision tonight, and I do think that we've got a lot of good questions to be um, clarified, but. Option two just seems like the most flexible. In case we need to revisit this in the future. So I think that would be. Where I would tend to lean is towards option two. And kind of exploring all those.
Because I guess we could go from two to just removing mandates everywhere. So we could go to two back to one, but you can't go the other direction.
That is correct.
Okay, and Cas, uh, Commissioner Mercero, your thoughts?
The majority of the cities. Seem to go for option one. And uh, I guess the question pops up my mind is. What are the real benefits? Of two. Over one.
That's a good question.
Yeah, and and I guess, I don't know, I I wouldn't characterize necessarily as a mandate, but it, I mean, as a benefit. But the difference is that we do retain a little bit of of control of being able to to. Apply some mandates to some areas of the city if we go with option two. And so. We haven't just given her all over completely to the no mandate. Uh, viewpoint, we've said. You know, being able to have a little bit of control over it is better. And you know, and we've had experience, as you alluded to earlier. With places where we thought our mandates were going to be adequate and the and the developer thought the mandates were going to be adequate. And, you know, we're living in a world where uh, it didn't even work out then, so. Uh, and and the other, the other aspect of that whole apartment complex was. That the school district thought they were going to get like sixty new children in the schools because of that big apartment complex going in. And they ended up with like two or three. Uh, so it was single people. Families without children. Uh, it's hard to predict what the demographics are going to be of multifamily housing. Uh, Counselor Alexander.
Well, it was just so, I, okay, I did, I said, I said, one, I could go to two for for a couple of things because we can always go back to one, you said. And then also though, but the only thing I'm concerned about for the citizens is. If if the. Car dealerships have to pay some taxes for some parking, I'm fine with that. But no citizens should have to pay parking in Gladstone. They shouldn't be set up where citizens have to pay it. So if if that's something we can do. Then two would be fine. You know, I mean, big corporation, I know what you were just saying about how, you know, what their taxes, but they, you know, what I mean, they could, they could pay a little bit. I don't mind that. And then we can always go back if it doesn't work, so.
Just to piggyback on that, you would need to choose one of the top three, which um, residential unbundled would be sort of a direct. Like, at least you would see how much the parking is costing for your, if you're renting or owning a multifamily residential unit. Commercial, that would be if you're a business owner and you um, you know, that's, some of those are residents of the city who own the businesses. And then when your lease is up, you would need to demonstrate compliance with this or. The employers with fifty or more employees. So so you do have to choose one of those three, so assuming none of the employers, except maybe school district. I don't know if any of the large employers live in the city. So so each of those three, you have to choose one and they all could potentially impact a resident or more, or more, yeah.
Were you talking about the tax on the the parking lot?
Microphone?
Mine won't reach.
Were you talking about the parking lot tax, Counselor Alexander?
Just any, any, no residential people, I don't, they shouldn't have to pay for any parking. So if you get a, you know, I don't even know about the commercial, the 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 big corporations.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not.
I was thinking you were talking about the parking lot tax, and that would be on the owner of the parking lot.
Yeah, no, I'm talking, I just don't think there should be any, anywhere in the city where you have to get out and put in a dime, a car, anything to park.
Thank you for clarifying.
I'm against that, so.
Well, if I'm counting correctly, we have twos. In the majority for this group. We have a lot of questions that I'm excited to get answers to, especially we're going to reach out to Sherwood to see what options they're choosing. So for purposes of getting us to May fourteenth, though, we should go ahead and move forward with option two. And looking at. Number two and number four of option two. But we're open to looking at number three, two.
Yeah, I'm.
Of option two.
And and the reason you're favoring option. Two, uh, I mean, uh, among the five options here, the reason you're preferring two, which is commercial unbundling versus one, which is residential unbundling. Is because you are assuming it would, it would have low impact. Uh, or or would you see any value in requiring residential unbundling? I I, you know, my thought was that if Webster Ridge Apartments had had unbundled parking from the beginning.
Yeah.
They may not have ended up in the situation they were in where they had to more, add more parking later. They may have had tenants who said, boy, if I can get an apartment for, you know, eighty percent of the rent. By not having to pay for a parking space, which I don't need, then, boy, I'm gonna move in here and let somebody else have my parking space. But that's the theory. You know, whether it would have worked in practicality, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm I'm not opposed to the residential. I've I've just, that's pretty common practice now.
It is.
Yeah, paying for their parking spot. So I don't think you're catching anybody off guard by that.
I I will say my, my reasoning for thinking that number two is more executable than number one is because. We have the business licenses and the mechanics in place to administrate that and. Interjecting ourselves into the residential lease renewal cycle for a much higher turnover, much. Higher number of units in the city uh, is a a bigger administrative.
Fair point, yeah.
I'd have to agree with you because we have. In the city of Gladstone, I don't know the actual percentage, but we have a lot of rental homes. And there would be no, it would be more cumbersome, I think, to track that.
Well, and I think if we started with option number two, just to kind of see if we had the ability to even roll out something like that. You know, we would still maintain the ability to. Change that if if commercial, if commercial debundling ended up being a success or. We found that we did have the resources to do that, then we could reconsider residential unbundling at a later time.
And again, it's one of those things where we don't have to mandate it, that maybe future, uh, if if it's becoming the trend anyway. Maybe if there were any new multifamily development going in, they would just do it as a matter of what the current policy is.
Mayor Milch, uh, Counselor Riechel has a hand up.
Counselor Riechel, go ahead.
Just to kind of add just a little consideration to that thought um, regarding the residential unbundling. I think that ties back to our affordable housing situation as well. Just something to keep in mind if we're going to consider. That option because I'm, I personally. Know many people that live at Webster Ridge and um. You know, there's a lot of roommate and multifamily within one unit in that facility. Because it's so expensive, so. They're sharing that and they have to commute, you know, there's a lot of um, that kind of aspect there too. So that's just something. I'm not necessarily opposed to that idea, but it is something to consider. When we look at that option, and that's all.
I would like to raise a question.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero. Of what the the pros and cons are. Of. One. Over two. Or two over one, in other words. Is two a good thing or a bad thing? And what are the pros and cons?
By one or two, are you talking about the the first two items on the list that's on the screen right now, or are you talking option one? Uh, remove all mandates versus option two, uh, pick two of the five.
I'm s- I'm asking what the pros and cons are of selecting option two over one.
On this screen, option two, um, implement at least two of the five or option one repeal all mandates? Or on this screen, choosing residential unbundling or commercial unbundling?
On option two. They have said certain things that apply. And I'd just like to know what the pros and cons of those items are. Why should I vote for number two versus number one?
Uh, I, okay, option one versus option two.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, yeah, and I'll, I'll start, but I'm sure there's more, um, voices to be heard on it. Um, I think as far as option one, which is repealing all parking mandates. The benefits there are that it's the easiest one for the city to administer. You update the code to remove parking mandates. You don't have to administer any lease agreements. Or requirements that employers do certain things over time. You're just sort of repealing mandates and then you're done. Um, I think the argument in favor of option two is that you get to exert some parking mandate. Over these areas that have potential redevelopment, like these yellow parcels that could add housing. To them over time in certain circumstances, meeting certain size units. That you could still require off-site parking, excuse me, off-street parking, um, of some of these properties. So that's the benefit of option two. Option two does have some administrative burden over time. Um, which would be dealt with by your city staff. So there would be a cost, um, in at least staff time, if not other costs. Making sure things are legal, um, those types of things. So I think option one has no additional cost beyond the code updates. The code updates happen no matter what, so those are equal. Um, but with option one, you don't get to ha- retain any kind of mandates in the city. And you can't change your mind later. So option two also gives you the chance to try it out for a while. See if the administration works okay, see if there's some impact. And then come back and decide if you wanna go to option three or option one, you can still retain that.
And I, I would say that while the yellow dots on the map seem like pretty small and inconsequential. A lot of these redevelopments have, uh, quadplexes allowed outright.
Yes, they all do, they all do. Um, and I will say that I had a conversation just today with a woman who lives on Ipswich. And they're very upset, um, on Ipswich about the triplex that's being added to the single family home and not providing any onsite parking. Because they are in the exemption area. Um, and I told her about this meeting this evening and she seemed like she wanted to come participate. Um, or at least, you know, hear what you all had to say, but I probably didn't give her enough notice. But there, there is, um, some concern from, um, neighbors of, um, middle housing developments about parking.
And one more thing I'll throw in, if so many of these surrounding cities have decided to go with option one. Then for, um, let's say not a, not a private homeowner wanting to redevelop their own property. But somebody who's coming in from the outside to look to do some, maybe they pick up two or three adjacent properties and wanna do something. Why would they go to a city where there's any mandates at all if they have the option of a lot of other cities where there are no mandates? Uh, so that's another factor to take into consideration if we want to be encouraging redevelopment. But I think what we're seeing so far in this city is most of the middle housing development is being done. Uh, it seems by existing homeowners who want to change their own property, uh, into something. And sometimes for the advantage of maybe not to use it commercially, but to have housing for an aging relative onsite. Housing for a college student onsite, you know, separate buildings, a potential for some income down the line. Um, you know, I, I, I don't know, I don't know if these people are wanting to go into the property management business as much as they're wanting to just get. More value out of their own property. Maybe they got a three percent mortgage and they don't wanna give that up, so. You know, you read a lot of articles about that these days. This, you know, we, we're seeing a record breaking gap between the mortgage that's existing. For most people and the current market level mortgage rate. So it doesn't make sense for people who have a good mortgage to get rid of their property. Developing it or doing something better with it is a good option for a lot of people.
And if you wanna see it firsthand, you're talking about Ipswich? I just, I just drove by there yesterday and I was just telling, uh, when you leave here, just go down past the community center, take a ride on Ipswich, three houses from the end. I stopped and talked to the people, they're on their porch. I said, what's that gonna be a duplex or what? They said apartments. Three of them.
Three.
Well, go there right now and drive. You won't even see any parking. Now, when they open that, there's three people living there with three cars. They're not even gonna be able to park next to there.
They do, they do have seventy-six feet of frontage, so that is three parking spaces on the street where the dumpster is. Yeah, well, the dumpster will hopefully be gone once the construction is done. Oh, right, right, right.
I don't know, but that's just.
Yeah. Yes, I've spoken to a number of the neighbors.
Well, I, I wanna thank you for, uh, you know, for getting that feedback, because I think we, we do see sort of a consensus to number two. And, uh, maybe not a full consensus yet on which elements of our five that we choose. But if we get questions answered, uh, that could become clear by the time it gets before the council. Uh, and, um, I want to express in advance my appreciation to the planning commission. Because I know that you will have to deal with, uh, you know, some of the, the hearings and other things that have to do with putting this into place before it comes to the council. The council will kind of set you on the direction you'll be going. But, uh, um, I know that this is gonna be a busy, another busy year for you on these things. But, um, it, it's our hope that this all, uh, bodes well for the city in the future. That, um, uh, not just on the, on the climate issue, which is one, you know, practical way that we can begin to address that. Uh, but in, uh, just our local, uh, economic development for the city. And, uh, perhaps creation of more affordable housing options for people and more options for families with children to move here and enroll in our schools. Uh, and that's, you know, one of the goals we set at the beginning of the year, and I hope we will continue to work in that direction. So, um, I think, uh, are there any more questions? Anything else that we, uh, need to do? If not, um.
Mayor Milch, if I can just, um, make sure I have all the questions.
Okay.
That we'd like followed up on. Um, I just emailed the senior planner at Gladstone to ask which of the two, um, sub options of option two. Sherwood has chosen and asked her if she could explain why Sherwood chose option two, if there's some feedback there. Um, I'm gonna reach out to Evan Manville, who's the DLCD climate planner, um, and ask about both, um, all of the sub options. Onto Tammy, would you mind please going to option two slide? The pointer broke again. Let's see, okay, uh, back one, yep. Um, so I, the way that the ORS is written, I think these all apply citywide regardless of if they're in the green hash mark area or not. So I'm gonna get clarification on that. So if, if the, um, flexible commute benefits applies to all employers over fifty in the whole city. Or if it is truly just east of our green hash area, um, same with residential and commercial. The way it's written and because it says lease renewal, I think it's everybody. So when your lease renews, whether it's commercial or residential, if you choose one of those, it's the whole city. Um, same thing on tax on parking lot revenue, which that would be good. Because that would be where we would think that we would see a, a commercial parking lot, probably in the nearer future would be along Portland Avenue. Rather than by Safeway, but maybe someday. Um, so those are the questions that I have. As well as, um, does DLCD have any guidance or know of any other cities who've, um, worked out how to administer? The lease, um, renewal trigger points. Um, I think that is everything I have. Oh, um, there was a question about how you would use the park, tax on parking lot revenue. For, um, non-automobile uses, if there's any guidance on, um, what would be able to be in that. But as long as sidewalks are possible, it sounds like that would be generally, people would like to see that. A list, okay.
Myriad of options.
Conflict resolution on, um, if you're, um, leasing shared, shared parking, conflict resolution on. Shared parking. Anything else? Okay, um, do you, so we have May fourteenth, um, but, um, would we have a chance to? We'll have discussion there too. I'm wondering if the members of the planning commission will have a chance to have another say, or is it now off to council? With the, cause I'll have these answers to the questions and maybe we can send them out by email.
But if we want. Your mic, turn on your mic. But May fourteenth, unless we change our timeline and schedule another work session with the planning commission, so.
So perhaps at the May fourteenth, um, if any commissioners have strong changes to how they've spoken this evening. Based on the feedback, if you want to submit an email into the record or come and testify, it's not a land use hearing. But I'm sure we could allow some.
I think that, yeah, we would allow public comment. Cause the council would be making a decision on which direction to go.
Okay.
But it's not a land use hearing.
Okay.
But we could allow for public comment on that.
Okay.
Either in person or through email.
Okay.
But not through, not through each other. We're not gonna deliberate it.
Right.
Outside of, uh, outside of a public meeting, but.
That's if it changes your perspective.
Right.
What you've offered tonight.
So, so in that May fourteenth, the council will be choosing basically option one or option two, is that?
Well, option, if they choose option two, they'll give us direction on which two.
I see.
Choices.
Okay.
Minimum of two. But I think it'll be two.
So will, so will that May fourteenth meeting, anyone that, any citizen out there that's concerned about what we're doing? Or how would they, they would get a chance to speak as well? Am I hearing that correctly?
Uh, yes, because, and we would not be adopting it at that point. We would only be giving direction, uh, to staff.
To start down this process.
And this memo in preparation for this evening was online and was available for public consumption for the last week as well. And is available to anyone who's curious. Um, maybe we could put the slideshow up too?
Yeah, we can post the slideshow.
Okay.
And do you have, do we have plans to, uh, public outreach at all beyond this? Or, um, at, at this point, we would ask that people just send in their specific comments or concerns?
Yes, there's no scheduled. Town hall or anything like that.
Okay.
Right. Would it be possible? I know there's really not enough time. Um, if there was a survey or something put in the newsletter, so citizens would be aware this is currently going on. Cause I'll lay odds, a lot of people don't know about it, but there's gonna be some.
That would be June.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, the newsletter's at the printer right now, so, yeah.
Well, but I think to Mayor Milch's point, we have a lot of work ahead. Um, once the options or the pathway is chosen, we'll then have lots of public hearings and things. So I think, um, a newsletter article about which option we're pursuing and what that might mean. And what the dates might be for hearings would probably be good. Okay.
I think that's important.
Okay.
And I don't know if this is standard practice, or if we could include a link to this meeting in the packet for the, uh, city council meeting. So people can, um, maybe understand what the real options are here. I think, uh, for somebody that have been on the planning commission more, uh, or at some point, we spend a decent amount of time, uh, helping folks understand. How the planning commission works and how we align to, uh, things like CFEC and, and the Oregon statewide plan. So I think your layout of the real options, I think would help people understand where their input, uh, would be really relevant.
Perhaps the, the staff memo that we draft for that meeting, I could link, um, or just identify the website link to, to tonight's. Meeting.
That's an excellent suggestion. Thank you.
And it's really the properties that have the potential to redevelop in the residential areas. That's where we want to get the people and opinions, the, the areas where we can't do anything about. That's what we have to gauge, so.
That's right. Okay, well, as soon as we get feedback from Sherwood and from DLCD on the questions this evening, we'll get those out to everybody. And then, um, if you have feedback, um, email Jackie and myself, Marcy. Don't, don't email back to the whole group, because then that would be.
A serial meeting.
Yes. Um, or of course, always call me or email me directly. If anything comes up or any questions you'd like me to ask, um, of anybody, I'm happy to do that.
All right, anything else? And then we are adjourned at seven forty. Thank you all.